Thank you and welcome to today's candidate forum. Brought to you in partnership with the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County and Central City Club of Central Oregon. Two organizations that are passionately nonpartisan and whose purpose today is to engage and inform Oregon voters for the general election. Today, we are hosting candidates for Bend City Council, positions one and three. Positions one candidates are Melanie Keebler and Justin Livingston. Position three candidates are Megan Perkins, Chris Piper, and Rondo Bozel. My name is Kim Scott, and I am past president of the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County, and I am honored to serve as moderator today. I'd like to thank City Club's annual sponsors and the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County members. Without their support, we would not be able to bring you today's program. Today's live stream is also made possible by Connect Central Oregon, a nonprofit launched with the assistance of OSU Cascade's Innovation Co-Lab. Our sponsors for the entire series of candidate forums are the Deschutes Public Library and Buchanan Schmidt LLC. We are grateful for their support for these forums. Our candidate forums are conducted according to League of Women Voters guidelines. All candidates who have filed in their race are invited to participate. In the interest of fairness, we do not let an RSVP of regrets cancel a forum. We thank the candidates for their participating in the forum today, and we appreciate the gravity of committing to run for office. Our goal is to provide an opportunity for fair and civil discourse. We will start with opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening remarks, and for each question, each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer. At the end, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. For opening statements, we have randomly selected the order. The order of who answers each question first will be rotated, so let's get started. Justin, you were the one that came out of the hat first, so Justin, position one, your opening statement, please.
Great, thank you. Good evening. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and City Club for hosting this forum. I'm Justin Livingston, and I'm seeking reelection to the Bend City Council. I'm a native Oregonian, a small business owner, and managing principal Realtor. I have lived in Bend for the last 20 years with my wife Carrie. We have two amazing kids, 11 and 14, and live in Southeast Bend. Four years ago, I ran for council to keep the city focused on its core services and Bend's lack of affordability, specifically in housing. Because I don't want my kids or anyone else to face a similar decision as my wife did when she had to leave Bend in the late 80s after graduating from Bend High. Then, Bend suffered from a lack of affordability, or sorry, a lack of opportunity. Today, we suffer from a lack of affordability. We can't continue to take actions like adding new taxes in a pandemic that make this city more unaffordable. Bend needs to be a city that works and is attainable for everyone. And that's what I plan to do. I want to continue my work that I've done in the last four years on council and then my previous two years on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. I look forward to serving another four years on the council.
Thank you very much, Justin. Melanie Keebler, position one. Melanie, your turn for your two-minute opening remarks.
Thanks, Kim, and thanks to League of Women Voters and City Club for having us here tonight. My name is Melanie Keebler, and I'm running for position one on the Bend City Council. I'm running because I want to bring my perspective as a career public servant to our council and provide bold, positive leadership for the challenging times ahead. I grew up here in Bend, graduated from Bend High, went to college in Michigan, and came back to Oregon for law school. I started working for the public as a state prosecutor, first on the coast and then in the valley. And then I became a victims' rights attorney for the nonprofit Oregon Crime Victims Law Center. I moved back here to Bend to raise my young daughter here and to be closer to my family. We all know that we're going to have to help our businesses and workers recover from the pandemic. But that doesn't mean that the other issues that Bend has been facing are going away. I want to lead on making our transportation systems safe and connected, making Bend more affordable by providing more housing and childcare options, and making Bend a leader in the fight against climate change while also growing our own local green economy. I believe that as our city grows and changes, everyone here should share in the prosperity of that growth. And Bend should be a welcoming place for everyone. Throughout my career as a public servant, I had to listen to different viewpoints, find a fair solution, and make sure that everyone felt heard in that process. As a counselor, I'll work with private businesses, public nonprofits, and government entities to help find community-based solutions to the problems we're facing as a city. I'm proud to be supported by a wide variety of organizations, including Oregon League of Conservation Voters, several unions, and the Central Oregon Labor Chapter, the Oregon Working Families Party, and the Source Weekly. I'm ready to get to work for the city I grew up in and love. Thanks for having me, and I look forward to speaking with voters tonight.
Thank you very much, Melanie. Chris Piper, position three, you'll be next for your opening statement, please.
Great. Thank you very much for inviting me this evening. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you and all the candidates. My family and I have been Bend residents for 15 years. My wife works for an Oregon nonprofit, my daughter is a junior at Bend High, and I'm an Eagle Scout, and I work full-time as vice president of promotional sales at Bend-based Silly Pint. I've been on city council since January of 2019, and my decision to run is so that I can continue learning and listening and building upon my knowledge about being a counselor for Bendites. In my next term, I will continue working for Bend, creating a community that cares about everyone of its neighbors, a community that helps those who need it while fostering creativity, entrepreneurship, and hard work, a community that comes out of the human and economic devastation of COVID-19 to build a more diverse, resilient, and robust economy. I believe Bendites are worried, first and foremost, about how to make ends meet navigating COVID-19. As counselor, it is my responsibility to do my part by working to build better infrastructure, reduce housing costs, keeping taxes and fees lows, and fostering an environment in which small business can thrive and hire or rehire and growing towards a more inclusive Bend, bringing Bend together. That is my focus as counselor and will be my focus when I'm elected, hopefully, to council in November. I'm endorsed by Bend Chamber PAC, Bend Firefighters Association Local 227, hired police chief Jim Porter, former Deschutes County Commissioner Tammy Baney, mayor pro temp Bruce Abernathy, The Bulletin, The Source Weekly, Realtors Association of Central Oregon, and Central Oregon Small Business PAC. Thank you again for this opportunity and look forward to the forum.
Thank you very much, Chris. Rondo Bozel, position number three. Rondo, you're next for your opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you for being nonpartisan. Thank you for hosting this event, which has been an old reliable. And as a sometimes often candidate, I always appreciate the League of Women Voters as being always the best hosted and the event with the most integrity, in my opinion. Moving on from that recognition, because I think the average person out there doesn't feel like there's a lot of real access or a lot of real voice out there for them, and that special interests seem to always dominate our elections. And that is going to be, kind of surprisingly, this time around, an emphasis in my platform and my conversation are the special interests I'm running against. I don't even really think of it, this race, as a race against two people. I'm running against two special interests, and if you look at the money, you look at the the structure of the organizations that are funding and I say purchasing of seven of the candidates that are of the 10 that are running for our city council, we need to ask ourselves a very important question. Who does our city council work for? Along those lines, we have other issues related. Who do our police work for? These are all things I'm going to touch on, but it seems like every question that you're going to be asking is going to relate to the homeless-making machine that we have here in Bend and how very much the real estate industry is responsible. And I'll wrap it up right there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rondo. Megan Perkins, position three. Megan, you're up for your two-minute opening.
Hi, thank you. I'm Megan Perkins, and I'm running for city council position three. And I'm running because I love this city and I want its growth and prosperity to be shared by all. I'm a fifth-generation Oregonian who calls Bend home. My three children and my husband were so happy to move here that we jumped head-on into Bend life. However, I quickly realized that my experience here was very different than that of my two black children. I looked for a support system and couldn't find one, so I co-founded a group called Embrace Bend. Two years later, Embrace Bend is a nonprofit that fights for a safe, equitable, and inclusive community for all. During doing this work, I realized that my children's experience is not unique and that many marginalized communities in Bend simply do not feel welcome. I want to change that. Bend is for all of us, and our city council should do all it can to make that a reality. I am also running to fight for economic equity in our city. Bend can become a livable and affordable community for everyone, but it will take work. I will make housing a key priority on council. We simply need more types of housing for more people. Expanding our housing stock with different types of affordable housing will allow first-time homeownership and a greater range of rental options. I will support expanded transportation options that improve connections around the city, no matter which direction you're going in, while making Bend friendlier for bikers and pedestrians. And I will work to improve and expand our transit system to make it safe and available for all of us. I will work to broaden childcare options for our zero-to-five population. Every parent deserves safe nurturing childcare so that they can work and contribute to our economy. I believe that commitment to community is everything. In Bend, I have worked on my neighborhood association board with Moms Demand Action as a Girl Scout leader and my daughter's troupe, and on the site council for my children's school. In my community activism, I have worked with all facets of our community, whether it's an elected official, a nonprofit, a community group, a business, or simply an individual who wants to be heard. And that is why I want to be your city counselor. Serving the community is the primary role of our city council, and I believe my passion for the future of our town means that I'm the right person to be your city counselor.
Thank you very much. And we're now going to go into the question part of the forum. Melanie, you'll be first. Melanie, position one, gets the first question. How much impact do you believe the city has on creating employment for the community?
Thanks, Kim. I think the city can have a lot of impact on how we create jobs here in Bend and not just jobs with good-paying jobs with fair benefits and wages for our workers. And I think that's why the city has a Bend Business Advocate, why we have the Bend Economic Development Advisory Board, why we partner with the Chamber, sorry, I keep hitting my camera there, why we partner with the Bend Chamber of Commerce, and why we've worked with EDCO and all the other people here in Bend that are looking to make our economy better for everyone and to increase the good-paying jobs that we have here in Bend. So I think also, as I touched on in my opening, the city can put forward policies around climate action that can actually help to grow our economy too. If we start to invest in green energy businesses and industries here in Bend and start to attract those folks to come here. I know we have a great solar-powered business that just opened up here in Bend. I'd like to see more of that, and I think those create good-paying jobs for people here in Bend while also helping us with our own goals around fighting climate and protecting our environment. So I think the city definitely has a big role to play in helping our local economy, and I think we're going to be seeing that, especially coming out of COVID and how the city spends its state and federal dollars to assist our local businesses and find creative solutions for them to stay open and survive through the winter.
Thank you very much, Melanie. Chris, position three, you're next. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please. Thank you.
How much impact do you believe the city has on creating employment for the community?
Well, the city has, you know, tremendous impact, but it is a heavy lift, and it's important that we bring together as many partnering agencies as we can to help with that, such as the Economic Development of Central Oregon, the Bend Chamber, and many of the other organizations that we have available to us. The other area that we can have a good impact on economic development and employment is expanding our infrastructure, building our infrastructure so it meets the needs of the growing community and the businesses. It also has an opportunity of looking out at our Bend Municipal Airport, where we're looking at opportunities in aviation growth. So there's many, many ways that we can look at this, and I think we're on a good projection right now through the efforts of the Economic Development of Central Oregon and through the Bend Economic Advisory Board, Development Advisory Board, which I've sat on for the last two years, which is a big component and partnered to the city by a mix of strong business leaders representing many different industries, helping us identify where we can make the biggest impact on employment.
Thank you very much, Chris. Rondo, same question. Rondo is position three. Thank you. Whoop. Rondo, you're still muted.
Okay, let's do it again. All right. I haven't, the libertarian side of me wants to stay away from having government being responsible for creating jobs, but as we've all noticed, we're in a very unique time right now, and it's going to require for us to accept the fact that we're never going back to the old normal. And that means our economy, that means our class sizes. We have a lot of opportunities built in to get what we always wanted. I've never thought we could pay for it, but the fact of the matter is, we, Bend, have been one of the most prosperous cities in our country for the last five years, and yet we still don't have a cold shelter in this town. That's just meant to illustrate that we can do a lot of things, including creating lots of green jobs that makes sense, that create value, that share the prosperity in this town that we see a very few of this community have right now. One of the things I intend to make as one of our goals, for some reason we don't yet have, as we become more climate-conscious, is to become a net-zero-energy city. We seem to have danced around that conversation for a long, long time. We even had the mayor of Lancaster here five, six years ago talk to us about it. He represents the first net-zero-energy city.
Thank you very much, Rondo. Megan, same question. Megan is with position three.
Hi, thank you. You know, I think when we're talking about this, first of all, it's really important to remember that, you know, the city does have a large number of city employees itself and, you know, as well as a police and fire department. And we want to make sure that our city is hiring people in an inclusive way, that we're providing livable wages, and that we're taking care of our city employees who do such great work for our city. I think that this is a great example of, you know, listening to people, right? We have, we have all these amazing committees and partnerships that people have mentioned today. I won't go through them again. And we need to listen to them, and we need to listen to what they need. And we especially need to listen to what they need right now as we are in, you know, the depths of COVID. Because the sooner that we get control over COVID, the sooner that our local businesses can bounce back. And we need to be working on protecting our essential workers and protecting our businesses, those that when we do come out of COVID one day, that these businesses are still here for us. And finally, you know, we want to make sure that Bend is considered a friendly, a friendly environment, a friendly place for new businesses. We want it to be a place of innovation for outside businesses. And so that's something that I think our city council should really, could really set a vision for as we go forward. And finally, you know, like Melanie was saying, there is such an opportunity here to be creative with new jobs for climate and transportation, and that's the reason why.
Thank you very much, Megan. I'm sorry. Justin, you're next for the question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, thank you. I haven't. No, I think the city, you know, even though the city doesn't, other than the city employees, we don't really create jobs, but we definitely have the opportunity and the ability to set the table for job creation. And one of the ways we can do that, or one of the ways we can do that, and some have alluded to it a little bit, but like, we have a contract with EDCO. EDCO's job for the city of Bend is to go out and find and recruit traded sector jobs to bring to Bend. It's very important that we diversify our economy. And Bend has a sordid history of booms and busts. And the more diverse our economy can be, the better resilient we can be during economic downtimes, not relying just on one sector, whether that's tourism or construction. All those are very important, but we need to bring more and more diverse businesses to Bend. And then also, one of the other things that EDCO does for us is that they help us actually, you know, help existing businesses grow and expand. Because we also, you know, we have a, we need to foster our businesses that are already here in, so that way they can grow and actually help train. You know, and even though it's not something that the city directly does, we can actually help set the table for training and getting, you know, people trained up for some of these, especially the new tech industry that's here, and just getting people up and ready for that. Because that's another way to approach our, sorry, my time is up.
Yep, thank you very much. Thanks for watching. Chris, you're first up for the next question. Inclusionary zoning, which calls for several types of housing within the same neighborhood, may be up for debate in the Bend City Council. Do you agree with this approach, create affordable housing?
Well, I certainly agree with creating affordable housing. We had a meeting last night, and we are moving the needle quite quickly in bringing mixed-use housing to the area. And our goal towards creating additional opportunities for affordable and attainable housing, specifically workforce housing, back to your original question about, you know, employment, is so important because that's a big gap. It is truly, workforce housing is really the biggest challenge facing many employers. And to open up more affordable housing, we have to look at certain house bills that have come in, especially 2001 that we've been working diligently with, and House Bill 3450. And that's allowing us to open up some commercial zones, about 40 acres, so we can bring in some more affordable housing. But also the mixed use, as you mentioned, such as micro units and so forth, that we can have available to those college students that are graduating or single households, that they have an opportunity to actually get in at the ground floor and begin to develop some opportunity and moving forward to a larger home. But that affordable housing and gap is so critical right now that we need to fulfill.
Thank you very much, Chris. Rondo, same question.
I think the question that we really should be talking about, because affordable housing in our city is pretty well-handled, we need to talk about those smart communities that are going to host these tiny homes and small homes. I've seen a lot of different ideas over the last few years, and I've heard a number of discussions about some of these communities that are going to be planned and that are being planned. I think that's, that is the revolutionary part of this conversation, because just a few years ago, none of this was a consideration, and it's because we're demanding it, quite frankly. But another part of my concern about this conversation is that every conversation that we ask, every question we get asked as candidates are about housing, but we're like forgetting that it seems like the focus of these housing questions are for people who are coming here or who are not yet here, and yet we're still not solving the local problem of homelessness, which I know a lot of people believe that homelessness can't be solved. But homeless people aren't drug addicts. They're not all mental or emotionally disturbed people. Sure, because of the nature of being homeless, they're challenged, but the reasons why they're there are almost first economic. And once you're in that hole, it's very, very difficult to get out. So we need to create an economy that shares the prosperity of a few Realtors who make a tremendous amount of money. And I guess, tax the rich.
Okay, thank you very much, Rondo. Megan, same question. Megan, you need to unmute.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to look at this issue, sort of seeing where are the gaps? And right now, we have two real gaps that I see. One is our near-houseless population or our, you know, our young people just out of school. And the other is our middle class, and those are our teachers, our first responders, our nurses. And they can't find a place to live. So what is the solution? Well, there's a lot of solutions, but I think the main one is to increase the different types of housing that we have in our community. And the more different types of houses we have, they'll fit more people. And I mean, by that, I mean duplexes, triplexes, cottages, townhomes. Just really diversify the stock so that we can increase first-time homeownership, that we can really increase our rental options for people, for people to really be buying and investing in a home here in Bend, not in Redmond, but here in Bend. And one of the concerns that I hear all the time is that this will change the character of neighborhoods. But I think it's possible to do this and do it right. Northwest Crossing, we have cottages that are, you know, seamlessly fit into our neighborhood. And so all this takes is good planning, and I think we can start to solve this problem.
Thank you very much, Megan. Justin, you're next on the same question.
Yeah, it's a good question. It comes up somewhat regularly. The mandatory inclusionary zoning does not work. All you have to do is look to Portland. Investment in multifamily housing in Portland has gone down since Portland implemented their inclusionary zoning. It actually has had more impact on multifamily investment in Portland than rent control has. It doesn't work. What does work is providing incentives. When I was on the Affordable Housing Committee in 2015, we actually put forth a suite of proposals to the council, and they passed all of them. And some of that is, so you incentivize, so if somebody provides deed-restricted affordable housing in the city of Bend, they get a density bonus. If they provide deed-restricted affordable housing units, they can, they get a height, they can go up a little bit taller. A good example of this is Renaissance, Revere Renaissance on the corner of Revere and Wall. Steve Rosak's project there is a perfect example of how incentives in the code allow and will actually produce deed-restricted affordable housing. And it's, so you have single-bedroom studio-type housing right next to $700,000 townhomes. So it does work, but it needs to be incentive-based. It cannot be mandated by the city. Because all it does is it just puts pressure on that next level up, and that's, that doesn't really help anybody overall.
Thank you very much, Justin. Melanie, same question.
Sorry, just waiting for my spotlight. Thanks, Kim. So I support inclusive zoning, which is different from mandatory inclusionary zoning. I support ending single-family home-exclusive zoning, which has rooted, is rooted in racist history of land zoning in this country and is something that the state has done with House Bill 2001, which our city will be complying with. I support more types of homes for more types of people everywhere in Bend. I support using every tool we have. We are in a housing crisis. If you've read the source, if you've seen the articles, we are way behind on the housing we need for people that live here right now and the people that are going to move here. And that includes people getting offered jobs at Schutze Brewery, at the hospital, with our police department, and they can't find a place to live here. That hurts our community. So I support opening up our code to allow more types of housing. And an example of this that recently came before council was the proposal for microhomes. The group that worked on that worked really hard to put together a great code package. I supported it. Our city council, and including my opponent, restricted it. And they restricted it from standard density residential areas of our city, which is a lot of land area in Bend. I'm worried we're not going to see that type of housing pop up because of the regulations our current council put on it. I want to deregulate some of that housing so we see more of it in Bend. That's what we need, and that's what's going to get us to start to climb out of this housing crisis.
Thank you very much, Melanie. Rondo, you have the, you're first for the next question. Do you support the Deschutes Public Library Bond 9-139?
Wow, that really tears me up, especially to be first on this question. Wow. Okay, well, I'm going to say something that's going to be unpopular. I'm going to say, no, we can't afford it yet. I'm a huge user and supporter of our Deschutes County library system. Right now, really, a lot of the indicators really tell us that we should be in a recession right now. We know that largely the real estate market is driving what economy we have here right now. Oops, I said something positive about the real estate. The thing is, we need to, we have an opportunity to create a new economy here, and it's not going to be happening while we're literally creating homelessness at a really super-high rate. And the thing is, when we're asking for this large amount of money in tandem with another very large amount of money for the transportation bond, we literally are raising the rent and creating new class of homeless people next year, or whenever this bond would, these bonds would kick in. I want people to really consider what they're thinking about when they're thinking about what we want and what we're willing to pay for it. And if you're willing to give up some of your neighbors and some of your friends that you like, think about some of the people we've lost already the last four or five years and have had to go to Portland or ended up on the street.
Thank you very much, Rondo. Megan, same question.
I have voted, and like Rondo, it pains me to say that I voted no on the library bond. You know, libraries are so important, especially now, you know, we need more of them, we need more services. They provide, they're an essential component to our entire population, but obviously especially to our seniors and our youth and our houseless and near-houseless population. But obviously, especially to our seniors and our youth and our our houseless and near houseless population. But I I did my research and I just don't feel that this proposal put the resources where they should be put. Um, you know, the East Side Library is 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 a huge success. It was a pilot program and it's a huge success. And I think it's something like the third largest service, you know, library in the system. Um, that is what we need to be focusing on. We need to find a more permanent location for them and and financial support and community support. Um, so no, I don't think this new central library proposal makes financial sense. Um, I don't think it makes sense for our community. And I'm I'm not a fan of how car centered it is. Um, we really need to be thinking about who uses the libraries and craft a bond for those people. So I voted no.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Megan, um, Justin, you're next on this question.
I I I don't support the library bond. I think now is the wrong time to be raising taxes. Uh, I will say that, you know, I've appreciated the partnership with the library board and with their executive director. Uh, and we've worked, I've worked very closely with them in regards to the city's uh tax increment financing uh program in the central district. Uh, but I have, I just don't, this isn't the right time for new taxes. I don't support the city's bond. I don't support this bond. Uh, it's just not the right time to be raising people's taxes.
Thank you very much, Justin. Melanie, same question.
Thanks, Kim. Um, sorry to join the chorus here, but I also uh voted no on the library bond. I'm a huge supporter and user of our libraries. Um, and I love the ability um that we have at a lot of our branches for people to walk our bike to our libraries. And when viewing this project uh through a climate lens, uh, I just could not support this amount of investment in a library that's going to result in four football fields of parking lot in one of the least bike and and pedestrian friendly parts of town. Um, I really believe and want to plan for and push for um the building of complete neighborhoods or what sometimes are called fifteen minute neighborhoods. Where everyone uh has a neighborhood where they can walk or bike within fifteen minutes to essential amenities. I believe libraries are one of those essential amenities. And so I would love to see um a plan going forward to not only support our East Bend branch, uh, which is really crucial for this side of town that I live on. But also to look at um how the library can move into more neighborhoods and help be part of those complete communities. Because libraries are a hub for so much activity, for meetings, for learning, for kids, for seniors. Um, and I just want them to be accessible to everyone in town. And unfortunately, I don't think the best this plan achieves that goal.
Thank you very much, Melanie. Chris, you're last for this question, please.
Well, I uh am also joining the the chorus, as Melanie noted, uh, that I I I voted against the library bond. Um, and that's not to say that I'm totally against libraries. Libraries have been an incredible uh part of my family's life. Uh, and it is an incredible area for a community to gather. Um, I've had a number of meetings in the library. I'm grateful for the amenities that they provide our community and and bring uh Ben together in cer- certain ways. But at this uh particular time uh that we're faced with, I just don't feel that the library bond is a priority. Uh, I don't believe that it's a uh an option right now that uh that 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 we need. Um, I do believe that we need to revisit. Um, you know, the possibly the location of the library, if at all possible. Um, I've had the opportunity of working uh in ways with the uh with the library, uh, you know, via the via the role of council. Um, and my hopes are that we can continue working as a as a strong partnership and making sure that we identify uh, you know, uh, library resources in a more positive way, um, where many, a lot more people can have accessibility to it. So, um, in conclusion, uh, I did vote against it, but I do hope that there is another option where we can uh can revisit this at another time.
Thank you very much, Chris. Um, Megan, you're first on the next question. And while we're on bonds, do you support the Ben Transportation Bond nine dash one three five?
I had a feeling you weren't going to say that. Um, yes, I I voted yes on the transportation bond and happily. Um, you know, first and foremost, I think that we, that was a really good plan that the the city council came up with. Um, I give credit where credit is due to delay the debt until twenty twenty two. It gives us some breathing room to get out of, um, you know, our our current situation with the pandemic, um, before, you know, they start issuing the debt. If I would like to talk about the problem right now, right? Everybody's upset with transit. Everybody, it no matter how you get around around our city, whether it's by bike, whether it's by car, um, whether it's walking, um, whether it's on the bus, um, you're upset about something. And um, so we absolutely need this trans- the transportation bond to start dealing with some of the problems we have in our community. And those problems are connectivity, north, south, east, west. They are um safety, right? Safety, not only for for cars, but mainly for bikers and pedestrians who so they they can have dedicated bike lanes, um, and that they can have, um, um, you know, infill sidewalks, so it's easier to get around town. The one issue that I do have with the bond is uh transit. I don't think there's enough investment in transit. Um, and transit more, the more access to buses that we have, um, the better it is for the environment. Um, it's an access thing for our community. It's an equity thing for our community. It will help parking and it will help congestion.
Thank you very much. Megan, um, Justin, you're next, same question.
Yeah, I don't support this bond either. Uh, I think the timing is wrong. You don't raise people's taxes in the middle of a pandemic and an economic uh recession. Uh, when you have unemployment, uh, the rates at the rate they are and people out of work and or people will working less hours, uh, it's not the time to raise taxes. Uh, I did support uh prior, uh, prior to the pandemic. I did support putting it on the may ballot. Because I do so, I do support the need and the tool of a bond and I want to see it be successful. But I'm afraid that it likely won't be successful because of the of the timing. Uh, when you're asking people, you know, the last question was about the library bond. Well, they actually chose to put their bond on the ballot first. Um, and so knowing that we already had a hundred ninety five million dollar bond, now we're asking for a hundred ninety million dollar bond. We're just asking people, you know, to increase their taxes a lot. And, you know, my fear is that you know, not only because of the economy, but now you're asking them to put, you know, approve basically four hundred million dollars uh worth of tax increases. They're just going to say no, and I think both of them will fail. And that's unfortunate, particularly for our our transportation system.
Thank you very much, Justin. Melanie, your question.
Thanks, Kim. Uh, I do support the transportation bond and I think we we really just cannot wait any longer to invest in our transportation system. It has not kept up with our growth, no matter what mode you use. Um, as Megan said, you have an issue with how our transportation system is is not working for people right now. Um, I do feel confident that uh Ben voters will approve this bond, and that's because Ben voters have been asking for this fix for a long time. Um, safety and connectivity have been a priority anytime the voters have been polled or asked by Ben City Council. Um, and this is something that's essential to our city's planning going forward as well. Um, if we want to start to work on climate issues, if we want to start to work on housing, this transportation bond will be a public investment that will help housing happen in Bend. Because we'll be developing intersections and roads that otherwise might have fallen to developers to help pay for. If we take that cost away, we can improve the chance of more housing and more housing types being built in Bend. Um, I also support the bond because I believe there was a a robust community process with people of all differing viewpoints who came together and built that project list. Um, people of differing viewpoints on council who came together and built the final project list. Um, and I think that that's why it has a wide support across our community from the Ben Chamber to the Realtors, Builders, the environmental um groups and the Ben Bikes. Um, all are supporting this bond because they recognize the historic investment that it will make, not in a, not just in roads, but in other modes of transportation too. So I do support the bond.
Thank you very much, Melanie. Chris, your question.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yes, I'm in in support of the transportation bond, have been from from the very beginning. Uh, I think as as other candidates had had spoken, uh, you know, the committee that that drafted this uh worked tirelessly for the last two years. A committee that was well mixed of of the entire city. So that was truly important to see that and uh really respect the work that they did and put into this. This is an opportunity for for the city of Ben to to truly move forward. Um, because we are one of the fastest growing cities in the nation, uh, as been stated, uh, all over the place. And, you know, a transportation bond, yes, it will help alleviate congestion. It will create multimodal opportunities. It will support pedestrian and bike friendly connectivity east and west. Even give us an opportunity to get over that dang railroad, you know, and uh but the other important part of this is that it does touch so many du- different areas uh that will create economic recovery uh for the city of Ben, create employment, uh, more options for housing affordability because of that connectivity. So I think it's highly important uh that the transportation bond, uh, my hopes are that goes forward, and that's why I voted to move forward to place it on the November ballot.
Thank you very much, Chris. Rondo, same question. So you said, yeah, you got it.
Got it. Okay, um, no. A thousand times no, uh, not, this is the wrong time. Uh, they uh the 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 bond itself has the wrong emphasis. We need to be putting way too much, uh, we may be putting way more emphasis on transit uh rather than infrastructure uh manipulation. Um, there are as an interesting point, uh, I'm I'm a bicycle commuter. I have been um now in Bend for ten years. And I've got a chance to through that ten years bicycle all over town. And uh recently, uh, among many infrastructure issues I have discovered, in other words, translated really bad screw ups that past infrastructure uh projects have created. Uh, I would, I would like to challenge anybody here who's a biker to get on their bikes uh after this conversation and from Empire on ninety seven and go north and go to the mall and see if you can find a safe and legal way uh to do that. Um, I've actually made a video where I've, uh, there's three different choices and they're all dangerous and and uh probably illegal, but I have I go to the north end of town at almost every day and I can tell you it's no fun. So the thing is, we are creating more opportunity to spend way too much money, of course. Uh, if they want to ask me for thirty thirty million dollars upfront, maybe I'll 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 say yes in small increments.
Thank you very much, Rondo. Um, next question, Justin, you'll have it first. How much money in campaign contributions have you received from businesses or business associates compared to citizens' donations? And do you believe this creates undue pressure to vote certain ways on city business? Long one, sorry. Would you like me to repeat?
No, I no, I hear. I was trying to the, there was a box up that said I needed to unmute myself, even though I was unmuted. Um, no, I I I don't have those, that information right offhand. Uh, I'm sure Melanie probably does. Uh, but uh, yeah, I mean significantly uh have raised funds from uh business associations, small business associations from the Chamber, the Central Oregon Small Business PAC, the Central Oregon Association of Realtors, all of which I've been very active members in uh over time. And of course, I'm an active member uh in the Central Oregon Association of Realtors as a managing Realtor. Um, those all organizations, no different than a labor union, are people that choose to get together, pull their resources and have influence. Uh, now, their average, like with the Central Oregon Association of Realtors, their average donation is about fifty bucks. So it's it's just a group of people have gotten together uh and pulled the resources. Is there any influence on me? No, the way I approach this uh is that, you know, I have a set of values and if that aligns with you, then great. If not, there's obviously another opponent uh or candidate that you can wait for that. Uh, you know, one of the things that I you know, I think is really important and I, you know, as people look at you know, my C and E's on the Secretary of State's website, I believe in full transparency and that's what Oregon's system is built on, is full transparency. And I don't believe all the candidates in this race, so I actually do that. They don't fully report all their in kind, any organization that does anything for my benefit, I tell them, you need to give me an in kind letter so I know what my percentage of that is. And so I can report that. Not everybody does.
I'm afraid your time's up. Thank you. Um, Melanie and that, and just in case you didn't get that, Justin and Melanie are going for seat one. Chris, Rondo and Megan are all going for seat three. Um, Melanie, same question. Would you like me to repeat?
Yes, can you repeat it, please?
How much money in campaign contributions have you received from businesses or business associations compared to citizens' donations? And do you believe this creates undue pressure to vote certain ways on city business?
Um, I can tell you that I, if if we're talking about businesses and business associations, I have not received money from those type of uh organizations. I have received money from union and uh labor political action committees and one local committee made up of some local leaders um that want to promote local candidates to support their values. And the total of all those donations is eighty five hundred dollars. Um, my opponent has ten times that in PAC donations. Uh, if you read the bulletin this week, um, at least eighty four thousand dollars from a couple of PACs in particular. It's probably gone up since then. Um, I want to first address uh what Mr. Livingston just said at the end of his comment there. Um, I'm really disappointed to hear Mr. Livingston accuse other candidates of not being transparent. I'll tell you, I'm running a campaign that's tight on the budget. I run my own uh finances and put them in and very careful to to follow the rules. And um after he made that comment previously in the bulletin, I was surprised to see that on his own O R star, he does not report all of his in kind donations. In fact, the Central Oregon Realtors PAC paid for some polling for Mr. Livingston back in September, and he never reported that two thousand dollar expenditure they made on his behalf. So I'm sorry to hear that attack from him. Um, I do believe candidates should be transparent. I also believe that Oregon should have campaign finance limits because I believe that when you get that much money from one or two special interests, it does influence how you vote in our city council. Or at least it helps, it makes voters think um and puts the appearance of impropriety. And I don't think that's something that we should have in our council. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Melanie. Chris, same question. Chris, you just muted.
Go back and forth. Um, I I want to first start out with, uh, there was been some comments uh about me as as counselor currently. Uh, I I want to remind everyone um that that is watching, I was appointed. I was appointed uh by the mayor and the city council at the time. And over the last two years, I've had no funding whatsoever behind me. Um, you know, uh, you know, so I just want to be clear on that. So now as I as I'm running to uh for for position three, yes, I've had um a number of PACs that have endorsed me. Um, we as candidates have had the opportunity to be interviewed uh by those PACs. Those PACs have then the decision uh amongst themselves on their own to then determine who the right candidate is that's going to help lead Ben forward through economic recovery, create economic resiliency, improve infrastructure, um, and all the above and the affordable housing as well. Uh, those PACs uh apparently felt that that I was the right candidate uh to to lead those charges and uh address those challenges. Um, and uh, right now, in terms of uh uh local uh contributions, individual contributions, I will say that I think maybe three out of the several many individual contributions I've received, uh, three are from outside of the state of Oregon. Uh, majority of the individual contributions are here within in the state and then the makes up for the PAC.
Thank you very much, Chris. Rondo, same question. Please unmute.
This brings me back to uh unfortunately, a core issue of my campaign because of I am unfunded by special interests. Um, I have the belief and um maybe you share it, maybe you don't, that the uh the monies that you see really correlate uh to the amount of corruption that you're uh as a candidate make yourself available to. Uh, we've, we've seen how uh the selected candidate uh has performed the last two years on council. Uh, there's no doubt that 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 as much as Chris is a very nice man, he has been bought for two years and now he's getting payment. Uh, thing is, here comes uh the other special interest that have bought four of our candidates and are ra- raising money for our candidates and and uh buying their campaign signs are are the Democratic Party. And uh earlier I asked, I started off this conversation by saying that our city council is nonpartisan for a reason. We should be free of special interests trying to run our city council. And so when you go to the Schutz Democrat uh page right now, if you're watching, go to the page right now and see how uh they are raising money for for the candidates that are running for our city council. What are they doing? Having anything to do and then pretending that the real estate industry is the only corrupt influence on our local politics.
Thank you very much, Rondo. Megan, you're next.
Um, just like to start and say that I have paid for my own campaign signs. Thank you. Um, I have raised about twenty eight, twenty nine thousand dollars uh for this race and except for about a little over two thousand. Um, it's been from individuals and those individuals um vary from, you know, being the ten dollar donation. Um, they, some of them are owners of businesses, some of them They, some of them are owners of businesses, some of them are just community members that believe in me. Some of them are even family members that are so excited that I'm, that I'm running for election. You know, like Melanie, I'm running, I'm running a bare bones campaign here. Um, I do my own social media. I do my own reporting. Um, I really believe that this election is a local election and it should be people powered. And, you know, this brings up issues of sort of integrity and fairness and ac- access and who has access? Um, and, and, and what are, what is the integrity of our election cycle if, if there's so much money being brought into it from special interest groups and to the process? Um, I think that we should have limits, um, on campaign finance, uh, on campaigns, donations, um, from corporations and from people. Um, I think that should be at a national level and on a local level. Um, it just doesn't do anything for the civic process if only people who have deep connections or a heck of a lot of money or some rich friends are able to run for office. Uh, we need people with vast variety of experiences in our city council.
Thank you very much, Megan. Melanie, you're first on this one. As part of the city's diversity, equity and inclusion project, the Bend City Council has voted to create the Human Rights and Equity Commission. Ben participates in welcoming week. Are there other things you think Ben should be doing?
Thanks, Kim. Um, I do want to say that I, I fully supported the recommendation to make the Human Rights and Equity Commission, uh, part of one of our standing advisory groups for the council. Um, I think it's a first step and I'm glad that you've asked about other things we can be doing. Uh, one of the things I've been talking a lot about during my campaign is really rethinking our public engagement and public comment process. Um, there's even been studies that have come out this year about who is it that ends up commenting at a, at a city council meeting or at a public meeting where we've got these rules and time periods and everything, who usually has the time to come to meetings? Sometimes the sub community meetings are during the day, the council meeting is at night. Um, and the studies show it's not necessarily going to be, uh, actual accurate representation that reflects the diversity of your community. So I think one thing the city can really start working on is how to build trust and partnerships by going out into the communities that historically have been marginalized from our government process, or maybe don't have the trust with their local government we'd like them to have. We can work with community partners to make these connections, but I want to see us going into neighborhoods. Um, even showing up at schools or churches or other places people gather naturally and talking to them about their local government and listening to what they have to say about what the problems are, they see with how they live in the city, what the things are they love about the city and what role our city government can play, um, in making Ben welcoming for them and making them feel like they really have a voice in their local government.
Thank you very much, Melanie. Um, Chris, you're next on this question.
Great. Thank you very much, Kim. Um, yeah, this is, uh, an area that, uh, gosh, six months ago, you know, I, I chair the steward, stewardship committee. And, uh, it was six months ago when we were sitting down with Ally Ship, uh, the partner with the city about ways that we could, uh, bring in the diversity, equity, inclusion training. And, uh, we ended up moving forward with that and that resulted in, uh, what we, uh, are moving forward with today, which is, uh, you know, the, uh, the commission. And, uh, so excited about that and excited that, that council has decided to move forward with it. Uh, I think right out of the, right out of the gate, when, uh, when I was appointed to council, um, I reached out, uh, you know, to, uh, the Latino Community Association, sat down with Brad, the exec- executive director. He informed me about welcoming week and, uh, mentioned that there had been, uh, not as much connection about it. Uh, so I'm, I'm excited that, uh, you know, we've been able to bring that back and, uh, in ways of a proclamation, uh, over the last two years. And even this last, uh, uh, welcoming week, uh, we were able to expand it even further and bring in more partners uh, so that we could, uh, be more inclusive and bring in more diversity and hear more of the voices, uh, that had not been heard. But also make sure that, uh, the city is, is seen as an approachable organization. I learned, uh, in the, in the, uh, twenty nineteen, uh, when the city was having their exhibits, uh, where, you know, a lot of the, uh, uh, under, I'm going over, shoot. There's so much going on right now, so.
There is. Okay, Rondo, your question next. Would you like me to repeat?
I got it.
Thank you.
Oh. You know what? Actually, would you repeat it for me?
Of course. As part of the city's diversity, equity and inclusion project, the city, the Bend City Councilors have voted to create a human rights and equity commission. Ben participates in welcoming week. Are there other things you think Ben should be doing?
Yes, uh, I am, uh, sad that we are not yet officially a sanctuary city. We are a nation of laws, to remind a lot of my conservative friends who don't like the whole sanctuary state, sanctuary county thing, which we are. And, uh, I will pivot off of this subject to talk about another very large subject, since I don't know if you're going to ask about it, I'm going to go ahead and jump forward. Two months ago, on a Wednesday night, um, Border Patrol and ICE came to our city and we, uh, collectively saw a picture of the Bend police standing there and hundreds of supporters, excuse me, hundreds of protesters, all, I assume, uh, local residents. Uh, and a couple buses that came to, uh, arrest some family men who were not immediate threat to anybody. And the question in my mind, um, along with, you know, how safe are we for everybody, whether the, the matter what color we are? But how safe are Ben residents? Who are those Ben police protecting? Who does our city council stand for? Who does our mayor stand for? And what I would offer to make us all safer is to be able to stand up to these organizations that come here without asking permission and tell them, no, this is our home, this is our city, and if you want to come here for any reason at all, you must first ask.
Thank you very much, Rondo. Megan, same question.
I'm going to look at the timer for this one because I'm going to go over. Yeah, you know, for the, for the past two years, I've been fortunate enough to actually participate in welcoming week and, um, you know, have, have done, done and seen some events that, you know, have, have, have had a good impact. The problem is a lot of the times I think that as a city and as residents of a city, we think like, oh, I went to that event, check, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm good for now. I've, I've done my part. And so one of the things that I know, you know, Joanne Nina from the LCA has always talked about is how do we take this welcoming week? You know, idea and make it into, to all year around. Because what we're seeing is that there are a lot of people in our community that simply do not feel welcome. And people of privilege like myself need to recognize that. And I think our city council needs to recognize that. That's just first and foremost. I think that the Human Rights and Equity Commission is a great start because I think it will really help give a voice, um, to, um, again, a community that oftentimes has not had a voice. And I love the fact that there is a restorative justice element to it. But just like Melanie said, there are so many other things that, that the city council should be doing. And, and, you know, first of all, it just because we have a human rights commission doesn't mean our work is done. And one of the ways that we can, um, be better as a city council is outreach. And that is definitely through the public comment process. I can't tell you how many people I've talked to who are upset and just simply do not feel heard when they finally get up the nerve to call to a city council meeting, sit on hold for an hour and then get cut off. I think that.
Much. I'm sorry, I have to cut you off. Justin, same question. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, so during goal setting in twenty nineteen, early twenty nineteen for this current biennium, I was the counselor that wanted to move, uh, our diversity, equity, inclusion goal into more of a, of a mission statement and a, a statement that should permeate all of our goals. Because I think beating, treating people fairly, uh, and have inequitably i- is the job of the city. I mean, absolutely, that's, the city needs to be doing that, making and ensuring that. That's led to trainings, uh, not just for counselors, uh, but also, uh, we've invited other elected officials and other community leaders. Uh, in addition to city staff now have a, uh, have a rigorous training that they go through as well. Uh, and then that really culminated last night in the second reading of the Human Rights and Equity Commission, uh, which I supported and voted for. Moving forward, I, there's a lot of current concern around policing and how we do policing in Bend and I one hundred percent support our police department and it's been a very progressive department in the nation, whether it's for their wellness. You know, all the different things that they, that they do, you know, very well. Uh, but one of the things I think we can change, uh, with the Ben PD is there's currently a chief's advisory committee. And I support actually wanting to bring that, uh, that committee under, under the scope of the council. And so that committee actually, instead of reporting to the chief, will actually report to council. And I think that's one of the things we can do, uh, and get accomplished in the next biennium.
Thank you very much, Justin. Chris, you're first up on the next question. How can you help Bend city residents understand and connect with the social and ecological landscape of the broader area around Bend? That includes things like ranching, farming, indigenous people, water supply issues, sagebrush and forest conditions.
Well, that's full, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good question. And, uh, am I still muted? It says unmute myself. Okay, I think we're good. I just had a, I don't know what that was. It, it's a great question and one that actually hasn't, hasn't been brought up. And, uh, I think, uh, first and foremost, it's one that, uh, you know, we're trying to figure out how to tackle that, um, that question and you know, in order to, to, to focus on that, I think, you know, we've got, uh, quite a bit, uh, of opportunities within the city where, where, you know, residents can, can, can truly participate and get engaged and be involved. You know, in those, in those decisions. Um, I also feel that, uh, the city can do, uh, more of an outreach out into, uh, you know, their neighborhood associations in which we're assigned to so that they can can learn and hear and understand, you know, some of the issues that might be approaching or, um, encroaching upon, uh, some of those neighborhoods, uh, based on the, uh, you know, the, the questions that, that you noted. Uh, but I, I, I do believe that that's an area that needs to be studied a lot more. I don't believe that we have a, a complete understanding of, of where it is or how do we even approach it right now. Uh, so I think that, that we need to at least create some kind of, um, committee or, or organization that can, that can bring some, some better professional expertise and perspective to it so that we can address it in the right and, and more methodical way.
Thank you very much, Chris. Rondo, you're next on the question. Would you like me to repeat? Yes, okay. You need to unmute. How can you help Bend city residents understand and connect with the social and ecological landscape of the broader area around Bend? That includes things like ranching, farming, indigenous people, water supply issues and sagebrush and forest conditions.
Wow, uh, that is a lot. Um, thing is, I don't know if I can make anybody understand anything. I, I do have a hard enough time understanding stuff on my own. Um, the, the issues that come to mind when I think of creating a, a better relationship between, uh, the county and the city are like transportation issues, rather, excuse me, uh, not, uh, transit issues and, um, homeless issues. I think that, uh, we need to be more proactive on both those subjects. Uh, and I'm, I'm going to segue, I'm going to use this as an excuse to segue from, uh, the, about the transit conversation because I haven't said enough about it yet. We need to flip the emphasis on this transportation bond. That I'm really hoping, uh, doesn't pass and we get another chance to look at, to scale it down and put a much larger emphasis on transit. Part of that s- switch and emphasis would be to get rid of Hawthorne Station. Uh, the neighborhood has paid much too high of a price, uh, to, to be forced to host that there any longer. It doesn't work. It's temporarily, it seems like it looks better right now, but we know we need a larger spread out, maybe three, four or five different, uh, locations around town that quite frankly can speak to transit and can speak to homeless issues as we see a lot of bus stations in larger cities sometimes, uh, serve both those needs.
Thank you very much, Rondo. Megan, your question?
Um, if I understand the, the question, I think that what you're sort of getting at is that, you know, the uniqueness of where we're situated here in Bend. Um, and, you know, it's a, it's this connection to our natural resources, um, you know, to our indigenous community and warm springs and the history of our land. And respect for our farming and our ranching communities, knowing where our water comes from and respecting our water. You know, and, and to increase that connection, we all need to be get, to get out into these spaces and we need to meet people that are not just, you know, from Bend proper. And we also all need to have a feeling of stewardship over our natural environment here. And I think one of the things that comes to my mind is access. There is an amazing, uh, man in our town that has created a group for our Latinx community to literally go hiking together to increase, um, access for a group that normally does not feel comfortable going out and using, you know, this beautiful place that, that, that we call home. Um, you know, that's the sort of richness of our area. Um, and so whether you're, you're, you know, sort of born and born and bred Bendite or you're new to the area, I think we can all agree that we are really proud of our natural environment and that we need to protect it.
Thank you very much, Megan. Justin, same question. Would you like me to repeat?
I'm not sure that would help me, actually. It's a pretty complex and I, I actually, even after reviewing it, uh, in your last, in your part one for council candidates. I'm not, I, I think what you're trying to ask is how do we bridge that urban, uh, rural divide? And I think that's a good question, not just for Bend and for Shute County, but for the state of Oregon. And I think it starts with just respecting people's, uh, you know, ways of life and the ways they, they lead their lives and whether that's a rancher and, you know, and you might need a big truck to, to haul hay or whatever you may be doing. You know, versus, you know, the, you know, the urban more lifestyle that we have. I think a lot of people actually do in Bend, they're, that one of the reasons why we live here is to be able to get out and enjoy the natural resources. Um, as the chair of the Bend MPO, I've seen how the city can impact, uh, the rural development and, uh, you know, those rural developments that are just adjacent to the city, uh, whether it's just on the North End or just Suter Woods or Tumalo. Uh, because the, the boundary for the Bend MPO actually goes a little bit beyond the city. And I think we can do a better job uh, at connecting, you know, both groups. And so a lot of times we do get very focused on what we're doing actively in the city and here's what we're doing and we're just moving forward. But I think there could be better ways, uh, to engage those populations that are just outside of our city, don't have any say in how we do our business, but we could be communicating better, uh, with both, with both groups of people.
Thank you very much, Justin. Melanie, your question?
Thanks, Kim. So first I want to touch on, I think we should be investing in, uh, transit and in regional transit, especially there are cool events and just different feels, uh, to the cities surrounding us, Redmond, Sisters, Madras, Lepine. I think it should be easy for people to move around our region and I think regional transit will help with that. Um, I also think, um, that we need to, as a city and as a city government, be more collaborative and more connected with the sovereign nation to our north, which is the Confederate Tribes of the Warm Springs. Uh, this past Indigenous Peoples' Day, I was really honored to listen to, uh, Louis Pitt and Jolene Estimo, Estimo Pitt, who are tribal members and Louis is the Director of Governmental Affairs for the tribes up there, um, speak about, uh, their connection to the land. And, um, a great moment was Louis carries around maps in his pocket that show the lands that were ceded by these sovereign tribal nations to our country. You know, and that we now are standing on right now. I think it's important for our city government to acknowledge that and then look at how we can collaborate with, um, the Warm Springs tribes and other uh, neighbors when it comes to issues like protecting our river and our water supply, being good stewards for the land and just helping our communities connect. Um, and I also want to say, I, I would have loved to see the city, see the city advocating for in any way they can, um, especially during this year with the Warm Springs, um, tribes going through so much with the, the, um, problems with their water supply, COVID and fires. I think the city can be a great partner to them and we should because they're our neighbors.
Thank you very much, Melanie. This will be the last question of our question section and then we will go on to final statements. Rondo, you're first on the last question. The League of Women Voters and City Club feel very strongly about civil discourse. What do you think can be done to reverse the polarization happening in politics?
Everybody has to put on their masks and give each other a great big hug. Uh, you know, and, and, and not that I'm not serious about that. Um, this has been a very, uh, tough time for us all. A lot of us have, uh, limited ourselves to, uh, contact via technology. I, I talk a lot every day on, uh, social media. You know, I have a couple thousand local Facebook friends and, uh, we talk a lot about a lot of things and, uh, sometimes, uh, we get out of hand. Um, but I think it's good therapy for us. You know, I think we just need to take ourselves a little less seriously and, um, this, this is actually kind of a question I've asked, uh, a lot of my very, very partisan friends. Can we be friends the day after the election? Uh, I like to start and end every conversation reminding myself that we're neighbors. And, uh, that should always be our primary interest and our prior, primary motive. I know it, it does for me. I know it it does for me. We have so many things that divide us. And if you are if you're hating anybody for any reason, and that leads you to act, you're wrong. So I like to end my political statements. Some of you have seen it. And some of you have seen those signs around town, love wins.
Thank you very much, Rondo. Great ending. Megan, you're next with, would you like me to repeat it?
Sure.
The League of Women Voters and City Club feel very strongly about civil discourse. What do you think can be done to reverse the polarization happening in politics?
Well, like Rondo, I wish we could all just give each other a hug right now. I think that we're all, I think that things are almost getting worse because we're not able to make those connections as much as we used to be. And so I think that's one, one of the really sad parts of the pandemic. I see it with my children as well. You know, we're all, we're all kind of hurting and we're all a little scared and 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 there's just, there's a lot of uncertainty right now. And there's a lot going on, you know, locally and nationally in our political sort of scene. With just a lot of, you know, you're either with us or you're against us, or you know, not being able to to talk about issues without sort of getting into to, you know, the sort of nasty conversations. I would like to see, you know, us as as a as a country and as a city, you know, improve that the way we we talk to each other on social media. I would like to see in improvement in the civil discourse that I see on the actual city council now. And I'd like to just quickly, you know, address something that we hear a lot about, which is sort of this like political balance that we need to have. I would just like to ask sort of like, where has that really gotten us? You know, we're sort of, we're we're shifting around so that we can, you know, find this balance. But I feel like for city council particularly, we need to find the best stuff. Oh, I'm still talking seven people for the job.
Thank you very much, Megan. I appreciate you noticing. Justin, you're next on this question. Would you like me to repeat?
No, that's all right. Thank you. Yeah, no, I think civil discourse is very important and it just begins with respecting, you know, people's people's point of view. I think civil often today is, as Megan mentioned, is that it's either you're with us or you're against us. And that's not how I've operated on the council. You know, I there's probably politically, you probably couldn't find more polar opposites than Counselor Campbell and I. But yet we get along and, you know, I would, we're very friendly with each other. I don't know if I'd go quite so far that we're friends, but, you know, but we we have a mutual respect for each other. And I've worked well, you know, with Counselor Abernathy as well. He's actually endorsed my campaign. And so I think it's really, it starts with listening and then wanting, you know, understanding, trying to understand somebody's point of view. We can vigorously disagree on a policy, but it's when it becomes personal that that's where it should stop. And, you know, I think, you know, my four years on council, I I know some others have engaged in some personal type, I don't know, we're not, one of my categorizes it as attacks, but definitely, you know, kind of gone personal with, you know, with people. And I'm proud to say that that's not something I've done, you know, while being on the council, even though I, like I said, I can vigorously disagree with somebody's position, but you know, but I, you know, I respect that and we can agree to disagree.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Justin. Melanie, same question?
Thanks, Kim. I do want to speak about how the discourse at the national level does unfortunately affect our local political discourse as well. I think the president's rhetoric in particular has pushed us even further apart. And I think local leaders need to not be silent about that when it affects people here in Bend. You know, sowing the language of racial hatred or violence is not acceptable, and it really does not help us to have the conversations we need to have to start to heal and move forward together and to understand we can disagree but still respect each other. You know, I will, I will never say that I'm not going to listen to anybody in Bend, whether you're liberal or conservative. You know, I spent my career listening, especially to people that didn't agree with me. I prosecuted domestic violence. And if you know anything about those cases, unfortunately, the crime victims in those cases often feel a lot of pressure to ask for the prosecution to be dropped or to even change their story or misrepresent what happened in order to protect their abuser. I have sat literally across the table from someone yelling at me, telling me they were, I was ruining their life or I was doing the wrong thing. And I had to be able to explain my role and why I felt the evidence meant I should go forward while still maintaining a respectful discourse with them. And I'm very proud that I was able to end those conversations with that mutual respect, even though we disagreed in a very, very difficult issue. So that's the skill I want to bring to council as a person that listens and will truly hear everyone that brings their viewpoint.
Thank you very much, Melanie. Chris, your question? Would you like me to repeat?
No, no, thank you. Thank you, Kim. I a hundred percent focused on on civil discourse. It's been in my life as long as I can remember. It started in scouting as a person of trying to be obedient, courtesy and kind to to anyone that 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 you meet or are introduced to. It's one of the reasons why I see council as a as a great example for for others to follow. You know, council is a nonpartisan position. We're there to focus on what's best and how to how to better the community in the city and how to bring people together. And sometimes as counselor, I've learned over the last two years, you know, you you almost have to become a mediator. And and really kind of sit in between two two groups that, you know, are having some hard times trying to get together and trying to help create that civil discourse and 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 show them how, you know, disagreeing with one another, but trying to find some common ground in a way to move things forward. See, they begin to see some benefit. And then hopefully from that example, they can carry that forward and hopefully strengthen the community and make it stronger. So my hopes are that that we can, we can move beyond partisan politics. I'm not sure if that's actually possible, but I think from council, I think we we as counselors and prospective counselors can really truly set the example for this city and and try and minimize the divisiveness that's happening and really start bringing more people together by listening and learning. And the article that I wrote in the bulletin that was published in October 2013.
Thank you very much, Chris. I'm sorry to cut you off. You've got the, you, you're first. This will be the last statement. And that, yeah, woo, surprise. Keep your mic hot. But anyway, I'm last, the last two minute statements and you get to go first.
Well, lucky me. There we go. You know, I've already opened up with my opening statement. The voter pamphlets are out, so please take a look and read those and 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 make your best decision and who you're best comfortable with. I just want to say that, you know, over the past two years, as counselor, it's truly been an incredible opportunity to serve the city of Bend. You know, right now, we're in strange times. You know, would be quite a wild understatement based on the conversations that we just had here. But now more than ever, it's important that we focus on taking care of our city. And I think as our city grows, that we try and strive for better collaboration with our our neighbors, you know, in neighboring cities and neighboring counties. I think collaboration is going to be really important and that we begin to pull those resources together. Some examples from from being counselor over the last two years. You know, one thing, you know, we talked about listening and having civil discourse. You know, I take counsel very seriously. And when I heard from residents and businesses about parking issues in McKay Park in the Old Bend neighborhood, I quickly brought people together to craft and implement solutions to keep the areas livable and safe. And I will continue working towards solutions as I've done with the Neighborhood Street Safety Program. And we must plan for the future. There's no more Band-Aids. Our goal is minimizing traffic congestion, expanding bike pedestrian transit infrastructure. So all Bendites can commute and have safety and and do it with ease, but also see how that's going to create more economic development, resilience, recovery and affordable housing. My actions over the past two years show that I won't waste time waiting in the national or partisan politics that only divides us and distracts us from the needs of the community. And I embody the nonpartisan nature of city council as it's intended to be and makes decisions based on what's best for the bend by listening and learning. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Just so people know, Chris, Rondo and Megan are all running for seat three. Justin and Melanie are running for seat one. Rondo, you're next with your two minute closing statement. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been a pleasure and as a lot of my conversations on social media is not. This has been so polite and so well behaved. And I think we're could be setting example for how maybe some of our national candidates can can act and and respect each other. I want to talk about real quickly about undue influence on our city council and the forces at work. There are two major special interests trying to buy up our city councils across our United States. I'll tell you a quick story. Ten years ago, the first time I put my name on the ballot for city council, Karl Rove came to town. For those who do not not know who he is, he's a Republican strategist. And he met with all the city council candidates. All the Republican city council candidates. That should disturb you. What was the message? What was the agenda? How did his visit here affect what has happened the last 10 years? Now we have the Democratic Party basically doing the unthinkable, the unforgivable and really, really stupid and very non-transparent. Putting a slate of candidates for our nonpartisan city council, and you should highly suspect that. So when a graph is put out and shows one candidate is 91% corrupt, well, I suggest that maybe the other graph that shows special interest money and things that the graph doesn't show undue influence by forces that are not you and me. I'm Rondo. I've been a community activist for a dozen years. I've lived in Bend for over 30. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rondo, for the closing. Megan, time for your closing statement, please. Unmute, please.
Thank you. You know, we've talked a lot today about, there's a lot of change right now. There's a lot of unknowns, uncertainty going on in Bend and in our country. And, you know, like I said, I think we're all feeling a little scared and uncomfortable right now. But, you know, cities are a dynamic place. They are constantly evolving. And oftentimes, we're presented with these false choices of either or. And I'm a both and candidate. I think that we can still retain what's amazing about Bend and make it a place for everyone. We can invest in our small businesses and protect our essential workers. We can build affordable housing and make sure our builders and developers are in the black. You know, we can make Bend a friendlier, safer place for bikers, pedestrians and transit, and fight congestion and connectivity for our drivers. I think these unique times call for unique leadership in our city council. And I think that some subscribe to this false premise of balance or needing a certain occupation to be city counselor. And what we need are counselors that are tied already tied to our community and are ready to set a vision for our city. You know, I I love political science. I have a graduate degree in it, in fact, and I love the democratic process. And I joke that I that I want my voting record written on my tombstone. You know, when I started this race, I picked this position to run for. And I picked it because I don't like seeing democracy subverted by money and power. City council is important to the people of Bend. The people of Bend decide who our next city counselor will be. And that is why, even though I knew it would be the hardest race up against over $100,000 in special interest money and incumbent with a lot of connections, I believe the people will make the choice that they want a city counselor that represents them. They will look out for them because this seat is theirs and it's ours. I believe my diverse background working in public administration for nonprofits and as a small business owner, as a community organizer, means that I'm up for this tough task ahead. I'm proud to be endorsed by city members of the city council, members of our school board, our former mayor and more. And I promise you I'll bring that passion for our process to the role of city counselor.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Megan. Justin, you're next for your closing statement?
I thank you again to the League of Women Voters and the City Club. Four years ago, I promised to tackle Ben's big problems, like Kremlin streets and a lack of affordable housing, without raising taxes on people already struggling to make ends meet. Since I entered office, Bend has repaired a record number of lane miles of streets without resorting to a regressive gas tax, made key improvements to our transportation system like Empire and Murphy Corridors, and implemented a wide variety of affordable housing policies. Ben's biggest challenge today is the economic distress caused to residents and businesses by COVID-19. I support efforts to reduce the burden the city places on those most affected by the economic slowdown. I'm proud to be endorsed by a wide variety of different people from a different backgrounds. Those include the Ben Bulletin, the Ben Chamber Pack, current Mayor Pro Tem Bruce Abernathy, and former Mayors Orrin Teeter and Casey Rhodes. Thank you for your time tonight, and I ask for your vote on November 3rd.
Thank you very much, Justin. Melanie, you're next with your closing statement?
Thank you. So Bend stands today at a major crossroads. Our city faces a period of economic recovery, an intense climate crisis and widespread calls for racial and social justice. All of this happening while we continue to see record growth in an increasingly severe housing and childcare crisis that puts our city out of reach for too many. The next few years are going to be critical for Bend's development into a sustainable city and community. We have to plan in smart ways for our future growth and how we can then make Bend a great place that's sustainable, affordable and welcoming. We have the opportunity this year to elect leaders who have the courage and conviction to offer bold solutions to our challenges and who will do the hard work to see them through. I believe I'm that leader and that I'm the best choice to join our council at this time. The differences between myself and my opponent are clear. I'm proud to be supported by people from across Bend with over 200 individual donors who are also volunteering for me and helping me to get my message out to everybody. I support our Community Climate Action Plan and Climate Advisory Committee. I support and have supported from the beginning, our Human Rights and Equity Commission. I supported opening our streets downtown to help save our businesses. And I support enforcing the mask mandate to make us all safer so we can beat the virus and get our economy going again. I also support fair treatment, wages and benefits for our essential workers who are getting us through this pandemic at risk to their own health. And I finally support the investment in our transportation system that Bend residents know is sorely needed. And I'm joined in that support by a wide coalition of organizations across Bend. I will never dismiss anyone in Bend as too liberal or too conservative to have a voice in our local government. As I've done my whole career, I'll listen and help the residents of Bend be heard in the process of council policymaking. I'm proud to be endorsed by former Mayor Jim Clinton, former Mayor Pro Tem Mark Capel, the League of Conservation Voters, the Working Families Party and the Source Weekly. Please make sure to turn your ballot in right away to your nearest drop box and vote for positive change on your city council this year. Thanks.
Thank you, Melanie. And thank you to all the candidates for participating in today's forum and for their well thought out answers. Thank you. You guys all did great. And thanks to City Club of Central Oregon and the League of Women Voters for partnering together to get this information out. Remember, if you enjoyed today's forum and would like to help cover the cost, please consider making a donation to City Club on their website, cityclubco.org. If you are interested in becoming a member of the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County or making a contribution, please contact the league through their website at l w v deschutes.org. Thanks again to our candidate forum series sponsors, the Deschute Public Library and Buchanan Schmidt LLC. This is our final candidate forum for the 2020 election season. I would like to say thank you to all of the people that work so hard to make these forums all come together. At the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County, thank you to Susie Penhala, our Vota Service Chair, also known as our Cat Wrangler. Carol Loesch, Leshy, sorry, Carol. President of our local league that helps us all keep focused on what's important. Jerry Hauser, my videoer partner in crime that made sure at times that I had the times correct and laughed with me instead of at me when I flubbed. And thank you to our question gurus, Marie Gibson, Don Harso, Anita Elliott and Dolores Ellis. A special thank you to Joey Drucker of the City Club of Central Oregon that has made this working with the two groups possible and easy. I also want to thank the tech crew, Scott Breeze and Blake, OSU and OSU Cascade students Daniel and Jake. You guys made this run smoothly as silk and made it fun for all of us. And for the last time, we want to thank you for your interest, getting your ballots in and keeping democracy alive. This was pre-recorded Thursday, October 22nd, 2020. Thank you for joining us.